We shall call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we shall have roll call, please. Carolina?
Councilmember Carl.
Yes.
Solby? Miller?
Yes.
Solison? Mayor Waller?
Yes. Well, once again, we shall start our meeting with Mayor Waller's quote for the day. Today, I just pulled the quote out. I thought that would have a little Thanksgiving message for us. This is from Mr. Neil A. Maxwell. "We should certainly count our blessings, but we should also make our blessings count." Just something for us to think about as we approach the Thanksgiving holiday. So, we will move on to approval of tonight's agenda. Are there, will entertain any additions or corrections at this time to the agenda? And if there are none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I will move approval of the agenda as listed.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as is. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we have the citizens' comments portion of our meeting. This is an opportunity for those in the audience. If you would like to approach the council, now is the time for that. Seeing none, we shall move on. We have no public hearings tonight. We will now proceed with reading and approval of our meeting minutes from November 12th. And we'll start out by approving the regular meeting minutes.
I will move approval of the regular meeting minutes for November 12th.
I will second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the November 12th regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And now we have before us the condensed version of the minutes. That is for the paper. That is from November 12th as well.
I'll move approval of the November 12th, 2024 condensed version of the minutes.
I will second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the condensed version of the meeting minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda, which tonight consists of the audit of city bills, our gambling reports, application for exempt permit for the Morris area gymnastics. And we have item D, a final pay estimate for Norrison Construction LLC, Morris Transit Garage addition reimbursement, I believe is what that is saying there? Or REM? I'm not sure what REM is, but...
Remo.
What?
Addition and removal.
Okay. That. Okay. And I guess I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the items on the consent agenda. I will bring it back to the city council for any discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda. I guess I didn't have anything. Does any members of the council have any? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion and a second. I'll just call for a voice vote on approval of that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we have the next up is petitions, requests, and communications, which we have none. We shall move on to ordinances and resolutions. And we have a couple before us tonight. The first one is first reading of ordinance number 127, an ordinance of the City of Morris to regulate cannabis businesses. I guess I'll bring it back to Becca and you can maybe speak to, maybe just hit the highlights. I know it's rather lengthy, but maybe you want to just give us a...
So, the zoning, the planning commission worked really hard to figure out where we wanted to have our zoning for any cannabis business. When, I think I sent a first draft of this a long time ago, you will note that in there, the registration part is out since we are delegating our registration to the county. We did not need that in there. So, that is out along with the minimum that we can have in town. That is out. Looking at buffers, so we are going to limit to 500 feet from a school, 250 feet from childcare, 250 feet from residential treatment facilities, 250 feet from public park that is regularly used by minors, including playground and athletic fields. And then if you look down at the zoning, so there's cultivation. They thought it was most appropriate in just the farm residence, cannabis manufacturing in light industrial, heavy industrial, and farm residence, hemp manufacturer in light industrial, heavy industrial, and farm residence, wholesale in the light industrial, heavy industrial, highway business district, and then a conditional use permit for the central business district. Cannabis retail can be in the light industrial, highway business district, or the central business district. Cannabis transportation in the light industrial, heavy industrial, highway business district, and cannabis delivery in the light industrial, highway business district, heavy industrial, and then a conditional use permit in the central business district. Followed the county's league with the hours of operations. We allow them between 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. seven days a week. Those are the main highlights of the cannabis ordinance. Any questions?
We're gonna speak to this probably later on, I believe, in your city manager's newsletter. The cultivation part of it here, item 2.2-1 or whatever, 2.21, that is allowable use than in a resident farm or farm resident district. Am I to understand that where the horse place is gonna go, did we zone that?
No, we've already switched that, yes.
Okay, so we switched to that. My question is then, is a portion of that, could that be used for cultivation?
If they decided to utilize that as one and register, that is an allowable use in that district.
In that district, and that just encompasses that little chunk we talked about?
Part of that has to go to the state for regulation as well, and you need to get licensure that way as well for a lot of this.
Okay.
Would that be affected by being children present with their business to prohibit that? I mean, I think a reading through part of their primary business was for children in their business, so I don't think it would probably be allowed.
It probably won't come up, probably won't be an issue, but nonetheless, I just thought we should have a conversation about that. Just in case, you know, if the property ever sells, I mean, right now, it's a horse use. That's the proposed use, but down the road, if that property exchanges hands, then are we prepared for that?
I just have a question regarding the childcare piece of it in the, I can't remember where that was, 250 feet of any childcare? So, what happens if somebody, I mean, there's a spot and then somebody comes in with childcare later?
So, if a business is already going and childcare comes up, their grandfather did.
Okay. It would be anything currently when that license is issued and when they, whatever portion of this there is, okay.
I would like to see just a map out of our area that is allowable. I mean, it, all the different conditions. And when we talked earlier, it was a pretty narrow of standards by where it could actually be. But it would be nice before we have our final reading to have an updated or current map with all of these regulations in there, if we can, please.
Any other discussion? That was really the only, the only item I had to discuss.
I think they're back on hold again. I saw something earlier in the week with their application process and going through with people that are stuffing with the applications to try to get higher up on the list to get eligibility for a license. But like you say, I think they're gonna have a lot of growing pains and the county told us that...
I don't think anything will allow it until after March, is what they're expecting.
Gonna be, I think, slow progress on it, but like you say, we were familiar with that when we started on this process, that it's gonna be a long, slow process to get her done.
And I think one of the issues I've heard, at least from some members of the county commissioners, that, you know, we really don't have the ability to dictate who comes in or not. That's gonna be made, that decision is made at the state level. So, it kind of leaves you a little bit powerless, really. At the end of the day, you don't know, you know, who's coming into your city, so.
I think this, what we do is mostly decide where, where a business can be in any of this, in the manufacturing, in the cultivation, in the wholesale, in the retail. So, that's our role, and this is what I'm gathering, is with our zoning and what came about, it's like we're, the city is responsible for where it is in the city.
And the planning commission, yeah, and the planning commission spent a lot of time and a lot of discussion. They had a number of meetings just going back and forth on what they felt was, was, and this absolutely reflects their feelings on it as well.
And I'm sure the state will do a good job of vetting all the different candidates and prospective businesses. So, we'll just have to trust that that gets handled correctly, so. Good deal. Any other discussion on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve or...
So, do we have a date for a second reading, or is that dependent on something else?
No, I don't know. She didn't have that in there. It was, I mean, poll up.
I mean, maybe it doesn't matter for this, but...
In our packet, it says second reading 12, 23, 24.
Is having to count dates? Yes.
Yeah.
Maybe we were unsure if the scheduling when we were having our meeting there before Christmas, which we decided at our last meeting to go Monday, the 23rd, so.
Well, I appreciate the planning committee. I know they spent, they spent a lot of time in looking at these regulations and ordinances and zoning, and I know they, I appreciate their in-depth look at this, so when it comes to us, it's pretty much, here's what we think, and I know they spent a lot of time looking back and forth on this, so. And I really appreciate that. So, I'm gonna go ahead and approve the first reading of ordinance number 127, an ordinance of the City of Morris to regulate cannabis businesses.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the first reading ordinance number 127, regulating the cannabis businesses, and I think I'll ask Caroline, Carolina for a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Carl.
Yes.
Solby? Miller?
Yes.
Solison?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. All right, next resolution before us is a resolution setting polling places for 2025. I guess before we get to that, we can just, just like to make a comment. I think the election went very smooth. I heard really nothing, no problems with really any issues at all, so. The three polling places seem to be working just fine.
And if you have a problem getting to your polling place, you request the absent ballot, it's pretty simple to go through that process to get a ballot delivered to your doorstep in your mailbox and return it. So, yeah, if you have an issue with going to one of these locations to just make the request, and it's very simple, and I've talked to a few people my age and younger that just are gonna be gone or something that's a conflict for them to request to do that, so, yeah, I think the three is more than adequate to take care of that.
Well, I'll move on that resolution setting polling places for 2025, the Efree Church, the Morris National Guard Army, and Federated Church for precincts one, two, and three.
I will second that.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second approving the resolution setting polling places for 2025. We'll have roll call vote in that resolution, please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Solby? Solison?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Okay, we shall move on. Next up is our city manager's reports and recommendations. I guess I'll just bring her right over to Becca and you can hammer these things out.
Sure. So, a few meetings ago, we had some more discussion on the grade and pace step scale. I think we answered most everyone's questions, so unless there is any more, I would ask for a motion to approve that new grade and step scale.
You want to just take these one step at a time? We could take action on that right now?
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking? Okay. All right, well, that'll bring it back to the council then and take some action on that.
And just to be clear, this is for steps, for phases one and two as well.
The phases, yep, the one and two will put into the budget, but this, yeah, the wage and step scale will stay this way until we reach for 2025.
Yeah.
I will move approval of the abdul grade and pale scale for non-union employees as listed on our packets.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. I think I'll ask for a roll call vote on that motion, please, Carolina.
Sure. Councilmember Solby? Miller?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Solison?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Okay, bring her back to you for...
So, I was asked probably about a month ago to bring the junk ordinance for you guys to kind of discuss, see if there are things we could add to it to try and get a little more teeth into some of the the blighted and junk areas that we have in town. And to kind of look to you guys on where you want to start with this. From that first page, you have the junk, and it kind of talks about what is considered junk.
Now, when you say this is gonna, the whole intent of this obviously is to, you know, as you said, put some teeth into this. How is this gonna expedite things? I guess our law enforcement people, they're gonna be able now to assist this probably in a more expeditious manner, because Joe, maybe you want to speak to this? We've had some issues trying to police, I guess this?
I don't know that law enforcement will have the bandwidth to write a ticket and investigate every problem property. If we, with the extreme cases, I imagine they would get involved. I think you want to go through your administrative process for, you know, junk, junk in yards, those kinds of nuisances as much as possible. I think that's, that's the quickest process.
So, it does somewhat concern me because it kind of, then we're kind of right back to where we were. You know, I mean, that's really been kind of our problem all along. We just don't have anybody to police this. So, my question is, who's gonna be going out and identifying these properties? And who's going to issue citations? If it's not the county and it's not the police, is that falling on us then internally?
Yes.
That's what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, how does the council feel about that? I mean, we had some, we just don't seem to be making any progress. And I, I don't feel all warm and fuzzy right now about that, to be clear.
Well, what's been the blocking of the progress? I mean, that's, is it because of the lack of interest in it, or, I mean, is this, this has been in the books, this chapter 10, right?
Yes.
So, this has been here the whole time. It's just been a matter of not dealing with it.
And that's what I'm asking, who's gonna deal with it?
Well, what's our administrative process? Not dealing with it, I mean, I mean, I'm looking at this, hasn't been dealt with because of, it wasn't, they didn't want to. Not because there wasn't the issue, but because, I mean, if this is all in here, it's like, well, this is exactly what we've been talking about. It's already here. So, just like any ordinance or any, yeah, any ordinance, how is it being dealt with?
I guess what my point is, is when we had our law enforcement, we had, we could dictate to our officers to go do it. And they did it. Generally, they worked with us. But now we have, in my opinion, we have a disconnect, you know, from this to our current law enforcement agreement. You know, they were pretty much at the mercy of Sheriff Dingman and his staff. Can you speak to that or...
So, right now, the process we've been doing is our public works director goes out and then sends letters. Lot of times, things get cleaned up. Lot of other times, they don't. So, we tried this year going through the court system, which is still ongoing. So, things happened in July, June, July, and we still haven't gotten there. So, I need to find where it is in here. Teigen stated that we have somewhere in here that says there's an administrative process, which then you guys would make the decision to clean it up. So, it would come here kind of like a hearing. So, we just have to, I just have to really sit down and put that process, what's already written, into play.
Okay, so then you, Russ will, I'm just trying to wrap myself around how this is gonna work then. So, Russ goes out, identifies properties, works through you, and you and Russ are working together on this, and then you'll bring it back to council for us to take action?
So, I think what I was understanding from Teigen was that they would get notice that there would be a hearing here. So, you know, like the neighbors complaining about that other property, they would be informed that there is something, the person who has the property would be informed. They can come here and state their case, why or why not, it's not junk. And then you guys decide what the next steps are.
Is that correct? Am I understanding that?
Basically, yes. I mean, they have a hearing in front of this body. The, you know, they have a notice of what's alleged to be the violation and, yeah, I mean, you will need to look at whatever is presented to you and decide, well, are we finding they, them in violation and ordering them to abate nuisance or not? Yeah, so that should be all in the 10.23.
Okay. I'm okay with it. I just wanted to clarify a few things so we all can understand how this thing's gonna work.
The sheriff's office has been very helpful this year, but their process is a slow process.
Well, and they have a lot on their plate. I get that, so.
Yeah.
So, we come to a hearing here with us, and we determine it is junk, then what, what, you know, what happens? Are the process?
Sure. So, hearing shall be held for the council at a regular or special meeting. Council then decides whether or not the item constitutes a nuisance. And basically, well, if you find it, well, whether you find it does or doesn't, you're gonna sign off on some kind of finding of fact representing that decision. It doesn't have to be a lengthy thing. It just says, you know, we find the following items are in violation. Then, there's an order to abate nuisance on that, which will include the date that they need, that the property owner needs to do the abatement. And, as I understand it, there's going to be an estimated value as well that's included in that order.
Value to get it cleaned up or value of the property?
The value of all offensive items shall be included in the evidence and in the findings. So, that means, okay, there's this piece of junk there. What's, what's the value of that? It's, if, and then we go to subdivision six of 10.23. If abatement of the items described is not completed by the date ordered, the city may enter upon the premises and remove the offending item or items. Any items of value are supposed to be sold locally, or if they're of no value, they're disposed of in a landfill or other acceptable site. So, there's a process in there then for dealing with costs and things such as that, but I mean, that's, that's the process. It is meant to be fast, but I understand it's inconvenient to do the hearings and everything. That's just your fastest available option.
So, then, just reading here, then we do the special assessment. If the value to clean it up is higher than any value of anything that's there in the junk, that we can put a special assessment on the property to the property owner to get reimbursement for cleaning it up?
I believe that's correct. I'd have to go back and look where, where we find that.
Sub eight allocation of proceeds.
Oh, right there. Oh, perfect, okay.
And the remainder certified as a special assessment, so.
Yes. Yeah, that's, that's right, sorry.
So, that's, yeah, just where we're at to seeing that through the process, the notice, and we got to give time. And if it's not done by the property owner, we go in and do it, and we can actually bill them for the cost of our cleanup less whatever the stuff is worth, if there's some value to that, if it's metal or if it's something that can, okay, well, that, to me, is a start.
Yep.
What, does this administration process take the court out of it? And therefore, it moves a little, little faster? Is that what I'm understanding when we talk about it, going to court versus coming here for the administrative hearing or their hearing? They would, instead of waiting for a court date, they come here and it's decided if it's, and then we move through the process?
Yeah, exactly.
Teigen said if we wanted to, we could do them both together, but this would still take, be quicker.
Well, I think the idea was junk on property, to get rid of it, how do we get rid of it and move it along faster? And this sounds like, I mean, the ordinance is already here. It's in the books on what constitutes junk, so I don't think we need to really, well, maybe we want to look at it, but we just need to follow the process.
Well, we can always look at, when we codify our ordinance, make sure we can look and see, is there other wording? Is there better wording that we can have in there, or other ones that we want to put in there?
And then I guess we'll just trust that you and Russ are gonna work on getting this, I guess, off the ground and keep, kind of keep tabs on and keep everything up to date, but that's maybe, you know, obviously, something you talk about in your weekly meetings and that kind of stuff. So, we'll just trust that you and Russ are gonna be bringing that before us when you can't take care of it internally?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we send you stuff, yeah.
All right.
And probably post just a notice to the public that we are gonna start enforcing a junk ordinance so that people are aware that you can't have this stuff that's undesirable for your neighbors to have to sit and look at. And we are gonna have a process to get it cleaned up, so. And then nobody can say, well, we didn't know. Well, yes, it was posted on, in the paper or, you know, the information on our website or somewhere so that people are informed of what's expected.
Yep. Are you gonna communicate with, to Jim? I mean, he obviously has been...
Yeah, I can let him know.
Just let him know kind of what we come up with here and maybe just reassure him that we're gonna try to do better. We're just gonna try to get better. That's really all we're talking about here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Institute, this is a question, I guess, for the council's institutional knowledge. Had, had you gone through this process before in the past, ever? Had, had, had you gone through this process before in the past, ever, but, okay? Okay. Just curious. I, I think, I, I assume a lot of people, when letters go out, will be cleaning things up.
Uh, Jay, you wanna just come up and approach the council on this?
John J. Fear, uh, this would be, I think, the fourth time that, that I know of it being gone through. It happened with a, a guy on West Seventh Street. And it happened with a guy living on Crystal Lake, close to the trailer park. And it happened one time in the trailer park. So, this has happened before. And in one of the cases, um, law enforcement had to be there to assist the city in moving, so.
Thank you, Jay, appreciate that.
When you just mentioned Crystal Lake, I thought popped in my head, um, what about businesses? Does this junk ordinance co- uh, business? Cause we do have one on Crystal Lake that is-
I believe so, uh-
So, it's property?
It's, yeah.
Has nothing to do with who owns what?
Junk, it's shun exclude, just because you're a business. And then, there was some wording, if there's any permits, uh, required, the last sub nine, if the hazardous condition or nuisance described, um, all present licenses issued by the city to carry on the business of such premises shall be revoked. So, if you have a license of some type to conduct whatever type of business and you have the problem, we have the right to refuse to issue a license until it's taken care of.
Well, in section ten point two three hazardous conditions subdivision one, uh, letter B is business premises specifically.
Right there, pretty black and white.
Well, and we had that issue, of course, with the more floor building, as you'll recall, we kinda went through that. So, I mean, that would be one example that we could all probably speak to, and that we all have pretty much gone through that, so. Okay. Any other discussion on the junk ordinance, uh, preview? If not, we'll move on. Uh, Becky, you wanna touch base, or just maybe ex- talk about the, uh, planning commission findings?
Yeah, so, uh, planning commission was really busy last week. Um, so they had a hearing on a conditional use permit application request from Leslie Berry, so Everwood Acres. And she, looking at, uh, um, a conditional use permit. So, that was the one we rezoned from, to farm residents. And then, um, in order for them to continue the work that they're doing, um, to make it work there, then it was recommended to approve the conditional use permit, um, for them. That way, they can, um, still do what they're doing there. So, she needed that, uh, to have this program there. So, um, so the planning commission is recommending to you that you approve the conditional use permit for Leslie Berry and Everwood Acres, um, to have their, if wishes were horses foundation there, where they provide horseback riding programs for people with disabilities. So, that was, that was the first one they did. Um, their second issue, uh, they held a public hearing on request from Priority Investments to place a billboard larger than allowed dimensions, um, at four East State Highway twenty-eight, um, which the planning commission is recommending the request be denied. So, it was determined that the billboard would be too large and too tall, and it did not meet any of the criteria needing to grant a variance. And then, um, the last issue that they talked about was the rezoning. They had a public hearing to rezone, um, Inkstead Media, which is the radio station. And that, uh, they are recommending to be denied. There was two parcels there, um, for them. Uh, there was quite a few in attendance voicing their opposition to the, uh, to the rezone change. Um, so after hearing from Inkstead Media and members of the audience, the planning commission denied the request for a rezone and are recommending that we do not rezone the two parcels.
Do you, uh, want us to take action on all of these tonight, or what are you thinking there?
Yes.
We just take them individually?
Um, you could, or you could do them all together.
I've got a couple questions first, just, just, just for clarification questions. So, um, not, uh, the first one, so we changed it to farm residents. And then, what does commercial recreation mean? Why do we need a cut for that?
So, in order, so in order for them to, to have a business there-
Okay.
Um, Joe and I looked at what we could, we could, uh, claim it as. What, what could they do? Um, cause their, the permitted uses in that district are single-family dwelling, general farming, stock raising, um, permanent stands for the sale of agricultural products, public parks, playgrounds, veterinary clinics. So, a conditional use, in order for them to do what they were doing, um, what made the most sense was the commercial recreation.
Okay.
Use. So, cause it's not, what they're doing isn't a permitted use, so they have to get a conditional use.
Okay, that was the clar- and then, um, in issue number two, the, um, what was the, the height of the, the dimensions? Do we have a billboard dimension regulation?
You have it with you, I did not bring it with me.
Council member Correll is ready.
Uh, from, from top of concrete to top of sign, it was tw- twenty-seven feet tall.
Oh, I only see it, but that would be pretty high then, if it's gonna go over that. Okay. And then, just what were some of the concerns voiced at the, um, for not rezoning that piece of property?
Yeah, so, some of them were, um, one of them was like the height of the tower. So, if, if it were a residence, residential lot, and you could have houses, you know, kind of stacked, um, they're gonna keep their tower, so the tower could fall, and that radius isn't big enough, if you have a bunch of houses in that area. Um, some of the others were, uh, the members who live there, um, chose it because of the wildlife. You know, it's a municipal conservancy, and, and there's a lot of wildlife and, and all that there. So, putting more houses than just a one, um, would not be-
Well, it's not a very big space to put a bunch of houses, if that's what I mean.
Yeah, they had seven acres, but from what I was understanding from, um, from Inkstead and from, uh, Warren Anderson, who was there, um, talking about it too, is probably buildable on there, maybe three, but the, um, wires underground probably go farther out, so you probably still couldn't build, um, that many houses. So, those were, those were some of the biggest probably complaints is, um, the wildlife, the, um, it wasn't, it's not really set up. Uh, one also talked about how, you know, low the spots were and how much fill would need to, to go in there. And it just didn't make sense to, um, for people. They talked about that it, it wasn't set up to have multiple homes, because it's not connected to water and sewer. And, um, doesn't, you know, with our Seventh Street, it didn't look like it would be, um, going anytime soon. So, those issues came up too, with multiple homes in that area.
Yeah, you know, really, you look at that, and that's, that's really why municipal conservancy is, uh, was really a district that's formed, because typically those, that, that type of area is not suitable to be developed. And, you know, as Joe and John will talk, uh, Testament, the water table there is so high, that they have a lot of problems with septic and water and sewer. You know, when you have a well and septic and your water table's right up there, there's, I just, I think would be a, a lot of, a lot of issues there. So, I understand that part of it.
Okay, thanks for clarifying, yeah.
I think what we'll do, uh, uh, for the members of the council here, we'll deal with each of these issues one at a time. So, what I'll do is I'll enter, entertain a motion on each issue individually, and then we'll have a roll call vote on those. We'll just march right through them.
I will make a motion, uh, granting the conditional use permit for, uh, Everworld, Everworld Acres.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, to approve the conditional use per- permit for Everworld Acres. We have first and a second, so we'll have roll call vote on that, uh, please.
Council member Corrells?
Yes.
Solby, Miller?
Yes.
Colleton?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. All right, we will tackle issue number two. The, um, issue with the billboard for four East State Highway twenty-eight for Priority Investments.
I will move that we deny the request for a variance for the billboard at four East State Highway twenty-eight, uh, on the cause of it being too large to not meet our standards.
All second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to deny the conditional use permit for Priority Investments for the billboard. And we'll, once again, we'll have roll call vote on that, please, Carolina.
Council member Miller?
Yes.
Corrells?
Yes.
Solby, Colleton?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. And the last issue before us, the planning commission, uh, is, uh, regarding the rezoning request from Inkstead Media.
I will move on that, um, recommendation and deny the request for a variant, oh, no, where am I at, wrong one. Deny the request for Inkstead Media to rezone parcel number twenty dash nineteen thirty-three dash zero 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 and number twenty dash nineteen thirty dash zero zero zero, same one, from an MC to an R district.
I will second that. All right, we have a motion and a second to deny the conditional use for, uh, excuse me, the rezoning request from Inkstead Media. And once again, we'll have roll call vote on that, Carolina.
Council member Solby, Miller?
Yes.
Corrells?
Yes.
Colleton?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Okay, I think that took care of all the issues before us on that end. Uh, I guess we can move on to the city manager's newsletter.
Okay. Um, winter's coming, so, fast approaching. We're hoping for not a lot of snow like last year, but not getting our hopes up. So, we've been really, uh, working on getting our stuff all ready. We had our safety meeting and, um, with department heads, getting information out, um, to their departments on slips, trips and falls and winter safety equipment. I attended the city leader networking luncheon on November fifteenth. That was put on by Lakes Country Service Cooperative. It was nice to get to know some of the, the members from this area, a little, uh, nor- northern, northern for, for what I'm used to. So, um, very great to, to hear from them, meet them. Um, Ben Schreier was there to discuss the programs that West Central Initiative is doing and could help with, such as their regional democracy program, and what they can do to help our solar expansion. So, those are the two, two things they talked about. Um, there were a few members who went to their workshop for the rural democracy. Um, and they gave rave reviews and said, um, that, uh, when it comes up, that we should really just kinda take it in. They have, um, like an hour and a half session, or they have a couple days. Um, so, when that comes out, um, I'd like to, to let you know, and we can maybe go to some of that. Um, they have a rural advocacy and a public leadership program. Um, I'd like to apply and see about, uh, about getting accepted into that program. So, it looks like there's six sessions, four hours long, um, starting next year. So, four in person, um, that I'd have to be out of the office for, two are online. Um, so, I have until December fifteenth to apply, so I'd like to, to do that. Our active transportation grants, we got word that, uh, we have a com- competitive application for the active transportation grant. Um, the full application is due in January. So, that one was for all of the trail areas. Um, so I did include, which I'm very thankful, cause we weren't competitive for the Safe House School Grant. So, um, I put, I put that area in this active transportation grant too. So, we'll just kinda have to see, um, as we work on it, what our piece of the pie will look like. So, um, I'll be coming to you, uh, before the January deadline to have a resolution to approve moving forward with it and allocating the funds we need for that. Uh, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Conference was last week. Um, very, uh, good informative discussions there. So, uh, lot of discussion on kinda what, what it looks like after the election. So, our house is split, Minnesota house is split sixty-seven, sixty-seven, and the senate is thirty-four, thirty-three, with the majority going to the DFL. Um, so it's a budget year, and they're hoping, since the, the bonding bill didn't pass last year, that they will, there will be a push for, for the bonding bill too. Um, they feel with the, the split sixty-seven, sixty-seven, it's gonna be a hard year to get a whole lot done. We don't expect to see a whole lot of policy changes, uh, like the last few years. So, um, but we're hoping things will, things will start moving. So, they, uh, start their session January fourteenth. Um, the coalition is focusing on the bonding bill, uh, increasing LGA funds, um, and then funding programs with large outreach, such as the PFA dollars. So, those are the, the three main focuses of the coalition. Uh, they had a panel there talking about how different cities are attracting visitors and residents. So, I'm bringing this to my, um, tourism board members, but, uh, fun takeaways from there. Um, Alexandria talked about having a strong chamber economic development team. Uh, they work very closely together to bring people into the community. Um, the, I know we talked about this at our work session. Uh, they meet once a quarter, once a month, once a quarter, I'm not quite positive, I, I'm gonna reach out to him and see. But with the city council, the county commissioners and the school board, just to kinda keep those lines of communication open. Um, and I know we talked about how we, we kinda wanna be more involved, maybe sit in on some of those meetings, just to kinda see what they do. But having even just a quarterly meeting with them would be kinda nice to, to hear what's going on with everybody. Um, he talked about how they started promoting when wedding venues that they have after, um, he had someone apply an interview there that just wanted to become a part of the community after going to a wedding. Um, Nuom talked about their chamber thinking outside the box and putting on different events, um, which, crazy one that, uh, they talked about doing is a spike in the street event, where they fill the street with sand and play volleyball. Um, they put, uh, they put their visitor's guide in hotels and coffee shops around Minnesota. Um, so they have a far outreach. Their visitor's guides are not just a visitor's guide, but also, um, uh, gives information about their community. So, for those who are wanting to maybe relocate. Um, Otter Tail County was on that panel. They talked about having a good working relationship with their universities and how they work with the cities in their county to collaborate and create a regional brand. Um, they feel that government shouldn't be the ones to be the pushers of, of all that, but to sit at the table. Um, and then they're very intentional in finding members for their boards for this, including members, industry members, which, um, may not always be thought of, but have, um, should have a seat at the table. So, the long-term care, uh, energy, retail, um, different ones like that. Um, he was big to say that the, this group that they have does not replace the chambers. And then Minnesota, Explorer Minnesota was there, and she talked about what Minnesota's doing, and then just on how breweries are a big tourist attraction. So, um, we just got a brewery, so, um, that's something that we can be proud of. There was a panel discussing childcare, um, and different ways- There was a panel discussing childcare, um and different ways that communities um are discussing and promoting childcare. So, they talked a little bit about um what Stevens County did here with the POD model. Um a few of them are looking more at the center-based and, and subsidizing how, so they talked about how their cities are subsidizing the childcare. Um there was a member from Wilmer that shared that they're facing some challenges with their childcare centers as um more of the state dollars have been given to preschools to allocate for free preschool. So, the centers make their money on preschool and school age kids. So, they've really hurt a couple of their centers in town. Um and then there was a panel on employee pay, pay, leave and leadership. So, the cities of Wake Park and um Nuom discussed how they're recruiting and retaining employees. Some of the things they're doing um is cutting down on requirements for positions, which we, we had to look at some of that when we started hiring some different spots too. That it's just, and then when we redid our job descriptions, um really looking at that requirement and what they need. They talked about changing the culture and getting employees involved in different ways. So, uh Wake Park has put together a state interview to talk to employees about what keeps them at the city. They also changed their reviews to simplify them and call them employee check-ins since none of their wages are tied to it. So, kinda like we had talked before, you know, it's, the wages aren't tied to performance, but um they still have those employee check-ins that, that, that they have, so they can just have some conversations one-on-one. Um Nuom does a wage study every three years in conjunction with their union negotiations, just to make sure they're competitive. Then they also started doing a ninety-day new employee survey along with hybrid work options, flexible scheduling, partnering with the school for internships so that you know, younger generation can think of a position in public service. And they have a wellness program and a robust vacation schedule. Said they have internal materials on how things are done and what the chain of command is to make sure there's clear and consistent messaging with all their employees. And for exempt employees, um they have a performance pay that they give. At the beginning of the year, they write down three SMART goals and if they obtain their three SMART goals and uh the last check in December, they'll get a performance pay increase. And then they have an employee of the month because they feel that words of appreciation help the morale of staff. So, um a lot of good ideas um that I'd like to, to bring back here, so uh very good conference. The bus, fast charger and electrical work um is getting finalized, so we're doing our final walkthrough on Friday. Um and then just some board updates. So, the park board met and discussed with Next Gen, the park at Eastside Park. There were some concerns from citizens there on taking away the green space in the parking lot. The plan is to pick a vendor in the next couple weeks. They are planning on coming to um the next park board, the next tree board, and then the second meeting in December, so on that twenty-third. Um they'll be here to present um who they've picked and share, share the proposal. So, a lot of big things there.
Um I just a comment uh regarding the gen two thing, you know, it's, it's exciting stuff. I'm just wondering if we uh are doing a good enough job soliciting input from the public at large. I know there's a pretty good concerted effort and there's a group that's really interested in this and I just, I just think that we could be a little more transparent so people know what's, citizens of Morris know what's going on. Because this park is, I mean, it's gonna be a big deal. It's gonna change the face of the park and for, well, really forever. And you know, Eastside Park has been an integral part of our community for a long time, so I'm just wondering if there's, if there's a way we could somehow, I don't know, not really pump the brakes, is, I'm not sure the right word, but just so we don't get ahead of our skis here on this whole project and that we somehow can get some input from the public. I don't know what the council thinks on this, but it just seems like things are moving off of fast and I'm just, just wondering what you guys think.
We really haven't been presented with too much information from the Next Gen group and that's, that's coming, I think, in December when they present some information to us at our second meeting in December. But they're, they're gathering information and we have some time. Yes, we need to, to check with the community and with our residents and, and the, the feelings and the, and what's, you know, what the desires are. It's gonna be a, a major change for that park. It's gonna be a very busy, it's gonna be a lot of kids, uh putting up some retaining fences from the little bit, just talking with them at the, the park board meetings. You know, they've been to one park board meeting that I'm aware of and yeah, it's very preliminary and just getting some ballpark ideas, so.
Yeah, and I, some of the feedback that I'm hearing from the public, just a few people that have approached me about it, said they kinda were getting the feeling that this is a done deal and they're like, whoa, what do you mean? I, I just, I think, I think we need to slow down here a little bit and take, you know, step back and take a quick look at it. Not that I'm either for or against it, I don't wanna give that impression at all, I just think that we could, before any final decisions are made, I think we could somehow get some input from the public and I mean, make sure we let people know that this is on the docket and if they can come to meetings and be part, you know, be part of it, maybe we have a I don't know, it's, I don't know what the, I don't know what the solution is, that's why I'm talking to you people. Maybe we have a, you know, an open, well, all the meetings are open to get that part, but maybe we have a special meeting just for that, I don't know, but.
Yeah, it's gonna be a huge undertaking. I mean, with the donations, they're, they're proposing to come up with the funds one hundred percent with donations to take care of it and that's, yeah, it's gonna be a process. It's not gonna happen come March or April or May next year that it's gonna be built. It's, it's gonna take some time, so I think we're, we're very early in the stages of looking at things with them. It's gonna be, you know, it's gonna take, I'm guessing, at least a year, year and a half to get some things. But yeah, just at our last park board meeting, I'm talking different locations and it was looked at by uh city manager and our public works director on some different proposed sites and reasons for not going with different sites and using this as a primary. But yeah, we need to inform the public and once we get the information, to definitely think that we should have some, some informational meetings for the public and especially the neighborhood, the neighbors. You know, it's gonna change the ones living across the street from. Any of you know anyone over there?
No, that would be me, for sure.
Yeah, it's gonna change the.
I mean, I'm excited, I think, you know, I, I'm all about change and, you know, moving forward, having a vision. I like that. I like people that are visionaries and but you know, at the same time, you know, just perceive a caution and as long as we're transparent and give people an opportunity to express their feelings, one way or the other, that's really all I'm kinda talking about here at this point, so.
And their reasoning there is it's between our business district and some of the very important recreational facilities we have with uh Eagles Park, our uh Holmberg Field, when people are in town for the different events going on and it's a in-between site for them to go with the younger children, but yet be within walking distance or to get up to our, our business district. So, I think the plan to try to work and integrate everything into it, you know.
And this, from what I'm understanding, this will be a downsized version from what Robins Island is, obviously. It's gonna be, have to be scaled down because Robins Island, I think it's that concept that they're sort of patterning this off of. But Robins Island is a much larger uh area as opposed to what we're talking about here. So, I'm assuming, I haven't seen all the detailed plans myself, but I'm assuming it'd be a downs, kind of a downsized version of that.
I think it's bigger.
It's gonna be bigger.
What kinda questions you got? I'm on, I'm on the Next Gen Committee that's helping with this, so I can answer a lot of your questions.
Okay.
It's gonna be comparable in size, if not slightly larger than the Robins Island.
I have no idea what Robins Island looks like, so I don't know what, when you talk about this.
It's a fully inclusive playground down in Wilmer. They have it in, they have it on one of their peninsulas out that way.
I don't, I, I mean, I'm excited to see the dis- where it is. I think we're, you know, to see what the plan is, what it looks like, what it's gonna entail, encompass, what that's gonna do. So, um part of it is, you, too, you have to be careful when you wanna open things up for discussion, what you get. I mean, then what are you gonna do with that? So, um I mean, we're, this again goes to the park board, it's planning, there's all kinds of people involved in it and so, and I believe that they would have the best interest of Morris and the city at the heart of it. So, just like, like anything that's done, it's exciting to see a group coming in going, yeah, we wanna put this up and there'd be no cost. Okay, um so, I don't, I mean, I have a lot of, I wanna, I would like to see it first, but I don't even know what questions to even ask. And so, I would just say, let's just start with that. And again, I am sure that everybody involved in this planning and putting this together has the best interest of Morris and its citizens at the bottom line.
And, and we've spent, as a, as a committee, we've spent close to six months now going over different designs and working with different vendors and we've got down to three. Um the intention is to meet next week and get our final designs from our vendors in so we can, we can present it on the twenty-third.
And I think that would be a good thing to put up. There'll be a presentation on the twenty-third. Please feel free to, I don't think there needs to be special meetings and special discussions. I think, come and see it. That's when it's being presented to us and if you wanna see firsthand and um, yeah.
That's really all I'm talking about, just so we get pe- get the word out so people know and have the opportunity to come. Because the last thing we wanna do is have, oh, why didn't I know about this again, you know, it's like, okay, I'm good with it. I am excited. I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be all good, um but we'll just, that's really all I had at this point. I know we got.
That's fair. Yeah, and, and, and like I said, we spent a lot of time working through this. We've, we've talked through and, and feel like we've identified a lot of the major hurdles. The intention is, is that this is gonna be a fully inclusive park for all ages and abilities, which is a, which is a major selling point for, for the city as an attraction, right?
Playground park, is that what we're, okay, cuz I, I had somebody approach me, I'm like, I have no idea what you're talking about. And they had all kinds of grant and I'm like, wow, that's cool.
But it's gonna be brought down by age groups.
Yeah, so it's, it's a, it's a massive playground is what we're talking about in different sections of the park.
And they're talking about taking where that pirate ship is on the northwest corner out and making that corner additional parking. Not sure how many parking spaces, but some of the people that attended our last park board meeting were very upset that they love that pirate ship and want that pirate ship to stay there. It's like, you know, sometimes we gotta, you know, proposing moving that to one of our other parks, but you know, it, change is always tough and what we have always had, but if you don't move forward and do some different things.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah.
This group has spent, as Zach has said, six months working on it and hopefully they're perfecting. And I know they, a lot of the ones on that group, and I've talked to a few of the different ones, are very determined to, to go forward and keep making progress and to make it work for our city, not to be something that's gonna drive us backwards. It's, it's something that's gonna be a highlight, make us stand out in the state of Minnesota on one of the top facilities in the state for a park of this type.
And I think we need to be excited about that as a board and not give the, a confusion like, oh, we need to put on the grapes, oh, because it's new and changing, but.
Put the information out to everybody, yes.
But it, it's, it's, it's enhancing our park. It's making a bigger playground is what it's doing and including all, for all, for all age groups and.
And the intention was, we were approached, uh obviously, so Next Gen is a group of young leaders in Superior and Westmore. We were approached by um our, basically our board of directors and said, with what we do for manufacturing, a lot of people in the community don't see what we do, so we wanna give back. And this is our way for Superior and Westmore to help give back is to, is to spearhead some of this and, and help improve the overall um community.
What's the, uh, maybe you could answer this question, Zach, with regards to the band shelter, what is the ultimate plan for that? What's gonna become of that? That's, that's one issue that I've heard people talk about.
Yeah, so the, the initial idea is to split this into a couple of different phases. So, first phase being park and parking lot, second phase being updated shelter and bathrooms, third phase being address what we can do with, with the band shell to help utilize it, maybe give it a facelift, look at that. I understand that that is, um had, was donated by a family, so that's something we have to identify whether we can do that or not. But that's also partially why we, we are proposing to use the Eastside Park because now you still, we're not taking all of the green space everywhere, right? You can have some of those events and parents can bring their kids and just let them run in the park, being fully fenced in and not have to worry about little Timmy on the road, right? So, that was, that was part of the idea as well, is that this can be cross-functional between a, a number of different things and have different events there as well.
Alright. Oh, I'm fine. I just, uh, my only concern was that we just do, you know, a good job of communicating with the public. That's the only reason I'm, I'm bringing it up, but.
Yeah, and, and like I say, our intention is to have a, a, a selected vendor next week and, and coming to the, the twenty-third meeting with um more information and, and details and likely a slideshow or, or here's what this is gonna look like, some renderings.
For all those people that are listening to the meeting tonight, mark that on your calendar, the twenty-third. Good deal, thank you. Alright.
Welcome back.
That's why we have people sitting on these boards, so we get some detailed information and uh thank you for that, Zach, I appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, well, I have a couple more. So, the planning commission, we had quite a bit um of things at the planning commission, but at the end of the planning commission, there was a discussion, um as two members will be leaving due to um us approving that, that where the one person holds a position on just one board. So, currently there are three members that hold spots on at least two, if not three, boards. So, the discussion of when putting together the guidelines is that we'd only have the one person to hold a, a position for each board. So, um the members on the planning commission disagreed um with this because of the knowledge, stability, fairness, um and fairness, especially on the planning commission, as the things they deal with only come up sometimes every few years. So, they gave an example of the sign billboard variance request that was brought up to the meeting. Um it hadn't been brought up for over eight years. And the members, we just, we have just a couple of members that haven't been on very long, but a couple of them have been on over twenty years. So, they did look back in their notes to kinda see how it's done. So, I just wanted to share with you that um they disagree with your decision to have one member on, on just one board. So, um and then the tree board uh will come in January to give their annual report. Um they've been working hard on getting the plan for giveaway trees. So, um we talked earlier this year about um utilizing the trees that we usually buy and having um citizens come and get a tree and plant them in their yards. They're very excited about um doing this, so they will purchase the trees in January and then we'll have some um public information come out after that, um just kinda what kinda trees they are, when we're having it, where they can go and kind of all of that um for that program. So, but they will come in, in January to give their annual report.
And part of that as well, um part of that order, just for, for everyone's knowledge, will be a part of the Arbor Day planting as well, trying to get those all ordered at the same time.
You've been busy, Zach.
Yeah, I had a couple of busy days in a row last week.
You sure did.
Um and then the only other thing I have for you guys, so I've been working with um my south group of administrators and we've talked about doing the um kinda like the newly elected officials training, but it's close and it's two hours instead of two days. So, um looking at January twenty-ninth, so Wednesday from six to eight in Montevideo, we'll have an official count probably later in December um to kinda see who would like to go. But if, um it'll be, it'll be just a two hour, we start at six, um we'll have introductions and then we have an attorney that's coming to talk, that talks about council roles and regulations. So, he'll talk about a half hour, then we'll have a little break and then he'll finish up his presentation. And then you'll have the last half hour to kinda get to know other council members and mayors in um, in the area. So, um most of, most of this will be covered by a grant from the Southwest Initiative Foundation. So most of, most of this will be covered by a grant from the Southwest Initiative Foundation. We may have to pay a little bit, cuz we will be doing some food since it's right after work. And I think we're the furthest north, and then it goes all the way down to Marshall, Minnioda area. So those guys will have to drive an hour or two. So gonna look at getting some, some food and things, so probably like ten to twenty dollars is what we were thinking per member that goes, so.
You said January twenty-ninth?
Yes.
I will be gone.
Oh, no.
I'm gonna be sitting on a boat somewhere, I think.
Well, you'll miss out on all the fun things, all the fun people.
I just, yeah, I regret to say that, but that's probably, I'm not gonna be there. Nuts.
If the rest of us are arguing on who all gets to go, any issues with the quorum, if?
We'd probably just have to post it, that we're, that we're doing it there. Yeah, cuz most, yeah, no, we talked today and all of them are hoping their whole councils go. So if we do, we'll just have to post it as-
I don't know how it's any different than if you'd go to the actual training that they put on. There could be more. I mean, there's never been, but-
Yeah, so those other meetings I sent you the other day, just let me know if there's anything you wanna go to. If I see anything else, I will let you know.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah.
You've been busy. Thank you for all the detailed reports, Becca, especially with the coalition. I appreciate that. You know, I wasn't able to attend, as you know. I had the parade of lights that night and I felt the mayor needed to represent and support the Chamber of Commerce effort at the parade of lights, which I did, so couldn't hardly do both. So thank you for going and taking good notes. Appreciate that. We shall move. Any questions from the city manager's newsletter, otherwise we'll move on. All right, we'll just go back to move on with the board updates. Again, I can just start the parade of lights. Of course, it was last Thursday, that was a chamber-sponsored event and pretty well attended. If you didn't get a chance to see it, it was people up and down Main Street. It was a little chilly, but boy, people came out. It was good to see.
I think that's the biggest crowd since, definitely since COVID.
We ran out of candy. I mean, we hit it just perfect, but you know, it's just priceless when you walk along the street and hand one of those little kids some candy, just to see the smile on their face. So it's well worth it. So any other updates from any of the members here?
I don't know if you all know, noticed the new library sign is up. Maybe that's been up for a while, but no more taped stuff on there. Actually, there's no hours on there, which is good, cuz then you can change it, but it looks really nice.
Good deal.
Tree stewards, the only other, I shouldn't say the only, but one of the things I wanna point out is Tree stewards had their training end of October. They had thirteen sign up and six, six walked in day off, so we have nineteen certified tree stewards. So that went really well.
Park board, just, I think we're gonna get the minutes from Torgi. I'll get Becca to put those in her next packet. But just the NextGen group, that was, took the majority of our meeting, but then discussed the scoreboards at the different parks and trying to work as a unit, one unit, with the high school, the university and the city to have one company come in and they're, they came out and looked at all of our scoreboards so they can work together and have everything under one big group instead of the city gulls and says, we have issues with this one. No, it's not yours. We don't have you on record. It belongs to university or it belongs to the baseball association. So they're updating and looking to do some fundraising to get some, a couple of new scoreboards for out to Eagles Park on a couple of the other fields there, but sounds like they finally have got to the bottom of getting together and having a master plan of all of our scoreboards and to be able to get parts. So that was something that they've been working on for a long time, since retirement from a person that took really good care of us to the replacements, that it was just a lack of communication. But just some of the little things there that are, are big for anyone that's involved or has children or grandchildren in the youth ball, that it will be updated and hopefully ready to go by spring ball.
When you say updated, did they talk about the wifi signal at all?
It will be a new system that'll be operated by cell phone instead of having to have the underground wires. So they'll, they'll get that updated. So yes, it's gonna be much simpler and sounds like it'd be-
I did talk to Mark about it, because I have grandsons, obviously, in Little League. And I did, they got, I downloaded the DAKA app, you know, the score app on my phone, and I kept losing signal. I mean, it was so frustrating. You'd try to, you know, you'd lose signal, lose signal, lose signal. And Mark assured me that they were gonna try to do something to get the, an increased wifi signal.
Got, yes, that's part of the update is to get that.
I like it.
They also, at the meeting before, I can't remember if that was in our info or not, but they're having automated chalking machine that the time spent for somebody out chalking, but they could program that chalking device per field to specifically to, and hit a button and it's gonna chalk it and be perfect.
Robot.
And say, it's robotic, yeah, and it's-
They have those for football lines, too.
They can pretty much set it up for marking streets, for anything. I mean, if, to get the, the programming done, we can use it for striping our streets or ball fields, so soccer fields. Yeah, it's pretty amazing just listening to the information there at our, our meeting when they presented that also, so.
All right. Any other board updates? We heard from all three of you. We'll move on to the other business section. I only have one question for our city attorney. Where are we at with the charter commission, Joe? I would be remiss if I didn't ask you for an update.
We have the order ready to go. I just need a judge's signature. I've finalized what I think they need from me as I was sitting here. And I'll be in touch if I, hopefully I'll hear back something next week. Either they'll tell me redo the order, we want something different, or, or we're good to go.
Okay, well, we're making progress then. Thank you for the update. Any other business to come before the council? Hearing none, meeting adjourned.